Seems a little odd.
John Collins usually is pretty.
You're not going to be, you're not going to be very.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order, 7:00 PM, October 4th, 2017. The Board has only four members, that is a bare quorum. So, as is our practice, we just give a warning that should the Board split 2-2 on any issue, that constitutes a denial. A tie vote is a denial. Just in case anyone wishes to come back some other day. Okay? I would point out that it's never happened that we split 2-2 in such circumstances. But as you know, there's always a chance. If we could introduce ourselves, please.
I'm Mike Howie.
John DeLeo.
John Feng.
Darrell Wilson.
Okay. The first item of business is the adoption of the minutes from September 6th, 2017. Is there a motion regarding the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second there.
Any discussion? All in favor, please? And Mr. DeLeo will be voting this evening. He's our alternate and we have not five members, full members. So, what I would like, with the Board's permission, I would like to propose a slight change to the order of the minutes.
Agenda?
Agenda, I'm sorry, yes. That is, we continue with item number two where it is, but bring up item six as the next item of business to accommodate Mr. Holm.
I'm okay with that.
Okay?
Is there any objection from, I mean, the applicants ever saying this?
No, actually.
Numbers three and four, okay.
So you are the reapproval.
What?
Commercial Development for Ellsworth Associates?
No.
Okay. All right. In that case, the next item of business, reapproval of the June 7th, 2017 major subdivision plan and major use site development plan titled Commercial Development for Ellsworth Associates LLC. Proposal, you know, proposal is to allow a developer to comply with a 90-day state law requirement for recording a subdivision at the Registry of Deeds. This project consists of the construction of two commercial buildings totaling 16,881 square feet on a one-point acre parcel located at 208 Ty Street, tax map 131 lots 47 in the urban zone. The problem that occurred was that it was not possible to register the signed plans with the Registry of Deeds within that 90 days because of problems that they had. And so, in essence, what we're going to do tonight is reapprove it so that nothing has changed in the application. We're just here to reapprove so they can meet their 90-day filing and continue with the project.
Correct. You know, I have sets of mylars for you here to sign.
And the Registry will be happy with it?
And hopefully if Michelle has her way with them.
Well, I don't see how they dare say no to Michelle.
I've been there, the applicant's been there twice on their own and to avoid having them coming back from Portland, I walked up hands twice myself there and it didn't work either. It's been a long story.
You're slipping, Michelle. Anyhow, does anyone have any questions about this?
Yeah, I do. This package that we received, these are copies of the mylars that they're going to submit?
Yes.
Or these are the original?
It's the, it's the original application. Nothing's changed at all.
I noticed.
The one thing that I did notice is there's a building missing, but on the mylars it is not.
The, so the plans all seem to have a revision block down at the bottom, reapproval of June 7th?
Yep.
Except for L1.
Um.
It appears to be blank. I mean, the block is there, but there's no.
Okay. On the, on the actual mylar for the landscaping plan itself, it had, it may not have that revision block in there, but it has the, the reapproval note underneath the planning board box.
Oh, okay, got that. And then the last question was the lighting, the visible light.
Yep.
It says one of two. Are there two or?
Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a detailed sheet that's completely black that came from them and I couldn't get them to change it.
Okay.
One of one.
All right. So I had.
This is a public hearing. Anyone may comment on this matter. I ask that before you do so, you be recognized by the Chair and then go up to the lectern and state your name for the record and then tell us what you have to say. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, I shall close the public hearing. Mr. Vice Chairman, would you happen to have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the reapproval of the June 7th, 2017 major subdivision plan and major use site development plan titled Commercial Development for Ellsworth Associates, I make a motion that we reapprove this final plan and allow the applicant to time to accord the subdivision at the Registry of Deeds.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Now you get to drive all the way back home.
Thank you. Yes.
Mylar set? Paper set for me? This is, this is mylar, 80%. They're coated, that's how the Registry wants it.
Which one am I signing?
You're signing all four of them.
Oh, I see, okay.
All three of those.
Okay, so what you're saying is do not mess up the collation.
Right, exactly. This is, you know, it says mylar paper, mylar paper.
Just go right there. I will oversee the.
So you should not mention how spastic we can get on the copies just now.
No, but I can get really strict, really fast.
The next item of business will be the preliminary plan for major use site development titled Woodlawn Museum Visitor Center for the Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations, the Black House Woodlawn. The proposal is to move, remove the carriage barn and caretaker's house, 3,825 square feet, and construct a visitor center and expand the workshop, 8,700 square feet off Route 172, the Surrey Road, tax map 26 lot 57 in the neighborhood zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
I'll start, if I may.
You can sit at the table.
I can sit at the table?
Yes, there's a microphone there.
I can't stand.
Well, you could if you wanted to, but.
I prefer to stand.
Okay.
I'm Terry Carlisle. I am the President of the Board of Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations, governing body of Woodlawn, also known as the Black House, particularly if you're a townie like I am or Terry. We have, tonight with us also on the Board is Todd Little Sebold. He is a professor of history at the College of the Atlantic. If you read anything last year during the National Park Centennial, you learned that the Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations was formed in 1901 to preserve land on Mount Desert Island and in 1916, 5,000 acres were given to the federal government which became Acadian National Park. In 1929, Woodlawn accepted the gift of the Black House from George Nixon Black, the last Black family member, and we have been maintaining that estate as a, as a historic house, museum, and public park. We're excited to finally be here tonight before you. A board-appointed committee led by Steve Shea, who's not here tonight, he is a board President Emeritus at Woodlawn, has worked on this project for nearly a decade with Executive Director Joshua Torrance. Joshua was hired by Stephen Fay in 2000. He received a master's degree in history from Indiana University of Pennsylvania, second master's degree in museum studies from Cooperstown Graduate Program, and he serves as the National Chairperson of the Historic House Committee for the American Association for State and Local History and regularly presents on topics of historic preservation and site management. We've had over 100 people visit the estate in the last several months to look at our project. Everyone that has, we have entertained has found it to be a dandy project and we're hoping that you will think so too after Josh introduces the folks that are going to present the project to you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Again, I'm Josh Torrance and my job is just to briefly describe to you how we got into this project. Woodlawn has been open to the public as both a historic house and public park since 1929. And really, our job as the caretakers of the property is to really ensure that the entire site is preserved. Obviously, here in Ellsworth, the Black House, pictured right here in this chamber, is a very significant and important cultural piece in our community. But Woodlawn and the Black House is really 180 acres and what we have been faced with is trying to figure out a way that we can have enough funds to preserve the entirety of the property, not just the Black House or the outbuildings. How do we generate revenue to support all of our ambitions and also provide opportunities to further enrich children in our area about the unique heritage and history of Downey's Main? So about 10 years ago, we started planning and thinking through what are our future space needs, what revenue potentials is there, how do we get people to come visit the house again? If you've all been there, I wonder if you've been twice. It's not often that we have repeat visitors. So we need to create an impetus to encourage people to come back again and enjoy it. And so, studying those future space needs, consideration of how we can entertain more kids, we had 118 kids there today and 135 yesterday. Thankfully, it didn't rain because we have no space inside that we can currently host that number of kids, led us to really thinking about how we could take the barn back to what it originally was. And what you see now is a fragment of what was once there. The original barn built sometime in the 1830s by John Black, heavily remodeled and changed by the last Mr. Black, probably about 1900. And then in 1948, drastically reduced and completely remodeled. What you see now is a 1948 barn pieced-meal together. And so, our challenge was how do we maintain the historic integrity of the estate? How do we maintain the facade of the barn and yet be able to create space for a modern function that we would like to be able to have? Lots of studies, lots of engineers, lots of architects have weighed in. Fortunately, a donor thought that our concept was a really great idea and funded a master property plan and then funded a competition to hire an architectural firm to help us re-envision that carriage barn. And we've subsequently launched a capital campaign. We're about $2 million short of our goal. I think that's in your packages there. If you'd like to make a donation, we can talk afterwards, but we're about $2 million short, but we're gaining on that every day. And we have a great team of people working with us to make sure that the integrity of the site is maintained and that the historic character is preserved and enhanced by our project. So I want to introduce to you Matt Odens from Odens ELO Architecture, who's going to give us a lot more detail than I can.
Thanks, Josh. Members of the Board, I also have with me tonight Noel Murphy from our office, Odens ELO Architecture, and Arrow Hedefine from Hedefine Engineering. He is our civil engineer and structural engineer on the project. If, if you'll allow, I'd like to make a quick presentation. I'll try to keep it brief. Just as Josh and Terry did give you a little bit background, we've been involved with this project now for four years and, and these guys, much longer than that. So I want to give you a little bit of a preamble that supplements the package you got. You're going to be seeing a couple of additional images that weren't in the packet because there are more presentation images. Noel is going to pass them around so that they're entered into the record. Not, not much new, nothing different, just, just expanding on what we submitted. And give me a second to get this up and running. So this is an aerial, existing aerial of the, of the conditions, but I'm sure everybody is familiar with this property, but just to review, the Black House, Surrey Road is off the screen to the right. The property goes quite far back to the left of the screen, 188 acres. This is really a small portion of the front of the property that's cleared. The Black Mansion, the barn, what's left of the barn, which is about a third of the original barn, which extended further west. Existing parking now, which serves that barn. And then to the outbuildings, a former slave barn and a caretaker's workshop. South field, north field, east field, just to orient you. This was a photo that was discovered as we got into this project and for us, this was a real revelation. You know, as I said, we spent a lot of time really starting out with the site master plan, trying to understand Woodlawn and understand the context in which we're working, which as architects is extremely important for us, especially architects that are involved in a lot of historic properties. So understanding the, the character of that site originally was important to us and the fact that it's the whole property that's, that's a historic site, not just the buildings themselves. So this was kind of a revelation to us because the barn doesn't exist today. This is the only photograph we know of that survived roughly from the mid 1940s that shows the barn in its full extension. So it's quite a large building on this property and in the context of the Black House, which is so close, and that's an unusual relationship to have the barn so close to the, the main house. So for us, that was a real kind of epiphany. And we thought then that really the most appropriate response here was to, rather than look for another site to put all of the program that, that meet the needs of the institution to allow them to continue their mission, we thought the most appropriate thing was to actually recreate the volume of that original barn. And in that container, house all of the new programs that they need to complete their mission. So that's what this proposed site plan does. The visitor's center is really an extension of what remains of the eastern portion of that original barn. So we're extending the same ridge line, same eve lines, we're keeping the pitch of the roof the same, the structural bays the same, and we're trying to extrapolate that structural logic in heavy timber structure out to the west, really recreating that volume in the place where a building of that scale previously existed, rather than trying to invent some new place to, to try to fit a building onto this property. We took, we, we made great pains over the course of the last several years to minimize the impact of parking. We have shown here and what's in your packet, 44 spaces of structured parking. All of the paving here is crushed stone, not asphalt, again, in deference to the historic character. One of the waivers that we'll get into shortly has to do with that, that paving surface. But trying to increase the amount of woodland around this parking area to really mitigate the impact of that on the larger site and have it be an extension of the woods, this is really the edge of that back wooded land, have that, that wooded edge really envelop that parking is, is the goal ultimately, to try to take it out of visual play to the extent possible. We have some overflow parking and reinforced turf adjacent to the entry drive, also close to the visitor's center. There's a larger area of 80 overflow spaces in the north field, which is, if any of you have been to the Antique Show, is where they do a lot of their big event parking out in that, in that lawn. The building is on either side of two main spaces. There's an arrival court, again, a crushed stone arrival plaza, if you will, for drop-off. There's room for two fire trucks side by side, so one fire truck could pull off to allow another fire truck to continue on. There's a fire truck turning radiant, or turning sort of K-turn condition accommodated in the parking area. And then to the south of the visitor's center is the reconstructed original barnyard, the animal pen with reconstructed fieldstone wall around it, and that becomes an outdoor extension of indoor programming. It's essentially a one-story building with a mezzanine. There's a main event space, which is about 2,800 square feet. There's a lobby with entrance from the main drop-off arrival area, but opening out to this events lawn. There's an exhibition space for changing exhibitions for the museum so that it gives them the ability to, to not only stage exhibits that they can't do in the historic house, they can also borrow artifacts from other institutions. It's designed to museum standards so that it meets climate, humidity, and temperature control, so that it's suitable, meets the curatorial requirements for lending. There are public restrooms that serve the occupants of the building for events and exhibition. And there is a small staging area for catering that serves both events in the building and events out in the lawn. It also serves as a trailhead to the network of trails that runs through the woods. Second floor, this whole portion of the barn is open to the heavy timber structure above. This end of the barn, the east end, is a mezzanine with a conference room and administrative In terms of the barn itself, the thing that we thought was the most important was preserving the east face of the barn, the face that you see from the Black House and the face that you see as you drive up the entry drive. So this is a view as you have come up from Surrey Road, you've passed the Black House, which is to the left, you're coming up to a reconstructed east facade. This will be built, new, salvaging as much material as possible to replicate what's there, really preserve what's there and, and preserve the kind of fourth side of that garden, series of garden rooms between the Black House and the, and the barn, with then the new portion of the barn extending out. And what we're doing is taking that gable and the original form of the barn and extruding it out. So you're seeing into the arrival plaza here. And again, that view from the south and a view of the proposed barn. Obviously, it's not a barn with animals, it's a barn for people and events, so the, the look of it is different, there's more glass. We did though, want to think about a way to make that barn take on some of the quiet characteristics of what used to be just a blank shingled box. And so, if you didn't catch it, we have operable, full-height operable barn doors on either side that close off the event space glass, either when that space isn't being used or when the type of event in that space warrants it, either for some control, for presentations, what have you, that helps change the character of the barn a little bit. This is all material that's consistent with what was there, which is naturally weathering cedar shingles. The east facade is painted to match the original condition. We had taken away the apple tree. There's a, an antique apple tree here, took it away just for ease of viewing, but, but we're going to preserve that tree and we're going to rebuild the original fieldstone wall that borders the two sides of the animal pen. Closer view, looking back towards the house. A view from the other side, the north side, so the Black House is over here. Entry drive comes up into this arrival, continues on to parking. The main entrance to the building is here, event space. A section through the building, so you see this, this is the main event space, heavy timber construction, exposed purlins, exposed vertical siding, all of the insulation is outboard. We went to great lengths to try to evoke the, the word that got tossed around a lot was barn-ness of this. We really wanted this to feel like you were in an old barn. We've tried to come up with a structural solution with the horizontal purlins and vertical siding that's in keeping with, with main barns in particular, have as much exposed wood as possible. As I said, all the insulation is outboard, so it still performs like, you know, a new, efficient building should, but it looks on the inside as if it's an unconditioned barn.
So would you say now that it's barn again?
Can I use that?
Good one, Joe, good one.
So event space is here, that's the main space. The lobby is here, also open to structure. The one area where we have two stories, actually three, including the basement, there's a new basement for mechanical. There are public facilities and then on this side of the corridor is the exhibition space. Upper floor is administrative offices and a conference room, which is open to the public.
Is that handicapped accessible?
It is handicapped accessible. There's an elevator and there are two means, two stair, rated stair enclosures from the second floor. This is a cross-section running north-south, looking east towards the Black House, cut through the lobby, so you're looking down the corridor to entrance to exhibition, restrooms, stair is enclosed in this portion, elevator is here with a door here, mezzanine for the admin on the second floor. And then another shot of the interior of the exhibition space. And another view from the south. So you're catching the, the painted end, painted clabber versus weathered shingle as it turns the corner with the painted cornerboards. We also have all of the documents that were in the original application on screen if you have any questions about them. But that concludes our presentation. I do want to mention that in the application, we've requested three waivers from this board and one waiver from the Fire and Life Safety Inspector. The three waivers that we are requesting are, number one, a waiver of the 20-foot minimum width for fire department access to 14 feet. The, the entry drive, which is historic, actually changes width along its course. It starts out wider on the in avenue and it narrows down on the out avenue. We would like to widen it to 14 feet, remove a couple of trees that are creating pinchpoints. This is something that we reviewed with the TRT and with the fire chief in a, in a previous meeting. So that's waiver number one. Waiver number two is related to the lighting ordinance. We are, this project, given its location, is classified, and forgive me, I don't remember the exact classification, but it's the middle of the three classifications, it's the middle classification, which is a kind of semi-urban classification that determines the light levels required, minimums, maximums, and minimum average. What we would like, given the historic character of this site, the fact that there really isn't site lighting on this property, there never was, classify this as a rural project so that we are reducing those minimum and maximum ranges for footcandle lighting for an area that's more consistent with this, this type of property. Butters are quite far away. All of the fixtures will be full cutoff, no light trespass vertically, certainly no light trespass onto adjacent properties. The third waiver is from a lighting requirement in the areas of stabilized turf. We have 65 spaces of structured parking. Forty-four of those are gravel, compacted gravel, and 21 of those are reinforced turf. This is a fiber reinforced turf that's used extensively for just that type of thing, for parking areas on, on grass. If I can go back to the site plan, just to point that area out again, the 21 spots of reinforced turf contributing towards the 65 structured parking spaces serving the building are right here along the drive. The ordinance, because that's a parking area, technically would call for lighting there. Again, in the spirit of trying to be sensitive to the site, we would like to not provide lighting for that area. We will designate that area by virtue of a difference in grass mowing, so that area will be mowed, the area around it, which is the field, will be let to grow a little bit taller, so it's a clearly delineated area, but we would rather not have lighting there permanently just because we think that it's going to sort of go against the historic character of the site. We will have lighting in this parking area, but because we have trees here to conceal that and they're relatively low poles, we think that we can handle that in a more sensitive way. We have lighting bollards that light the path, that light the edge of the driveway. We have lighting bollards that light the path, that light the edge of the driveway and light the walking path that links the parking lot through to the arrival court and into the building. And we have lights at the building entrance that provide the proper illumination. So the application before you meets the rural standards with the hope that you grant the waiver for that. I mentioned the waiver from fire and life safety inspector. That's a waiver from a requirement for asphalt paving to crushed stone. Again, we'd like to use crushed stone in the context of this historic property rather than asphalt. It's compacted to 95 percent, it's ADA compliant in the places where it needs to be, and we would like to avoid asphalt if we can. We've had that discussion with the fire chief, who seems supportive of that, but it's until he grants that waiver, it hasn't been given yet. So with that, I will open up to any questions you have for us.
Questions, Board?
In the, shall you assume that the chapter 39 Historic Preservation Ordinance, that they talk about a approval from the, if I get it right, I lined it out, certificate of appropriateness from a designated historic district, has that been done? I mean, I didn't see that in the packet, but...
It hasn't been done, we've had preliminary conversations with them, Joshua has engaged them, we actually just met with a few members from the preservation commission today, so that's an ongoing process. Our understanding is that the certificate of appropriateness has to precede issuance of a building permit, so it's our intention to acquire a certificate of appropriateness, hopefully, and then ultimately go for a building permit.
You, there are existing outbuildings.
There are two existing outbuildings, yes.
What happens to those?
So the sleigh barn, which is the one closest to the carriage barn and closest to the house, remains untouched. That's been renovated over the years, I think eight years ago was the most recent renovation of that outbuilding. There's a second outbuilding, which is a, what's being used now is a preservation workshop, it's where their carpenter has tools and lumber and he, you know, if he needs to make wood trim for the house, he does it in there, sort of a wood shop. Our plan is to convert that to storage for the historic carriage and sleigh collection. To do that, we are proposing that we expand the footprint of that shed, which is basically two garage bays, add two more garage bays, sort of replicating the existing ones, same shed roof, same siding, same trim, same paint scheme as the existing, and move all the carriages and sleighs into there. That would be, it's unconditioned space, it is open to the public seasonally, the public can, the way that we've planned it is the public can walk into that space, the first three or four feet, they can stand in there, carriages and sleighs are roped off so they can stand along two sides of that collection and walk into it, they can't meander in between the, much like the way that they're displayed currently in the barn. But those are the only two outbuildings. Actually, I should correct that, there is a third building on the property now, which is a caretaker's house that was built in 1968, which really isn't appropriate on that property, it doesn't fit, it's not part of the sort of historic fabric. That's being taken down to make way for this project, both, I believe it actually is located here, so it would be in that first zone of parking. So those are the three existing outbuildings.
Some of the materials from the existing barn being incorporated into the new?
To the extent feasible, we, certainly the east facade, we want to salvage as much of that material as possible. There are issues with that, there's a very big powder post-beetle problem in the barn, so if we save anything that needs to be treated properly so that it doesn't ultimately undermine the new building. We would like to save as much of that as we can and reuse it. We've had preliminary conversations about some of the interior material, again, the same condition applies. I guess the answer is, to the extent that it's feasible, yes, we would like to save material. Figuring out what material is able to be saved, is worth being saved. We have to make a distinction between what's historic, what's part of the 1948 renovation of that barn so that we can differentiate in terms of prioritizing. But I think our interest is to be as sensitive to the history of the barn as possible and save as much as we can. But to be clear, it is a reconstruction, it's a new, has to have new foundation, has to meet life safety, you know, all of the things that go along with a code-compliant modern building today.
Have you had a chance to read Ms. Goodrich's letter?
Yes.
Perhaps you could address her concerns, and also, has Mr. Horne happened to read her letter?
I haven't read that letter, Bill.
I'm happy to offer my opinion, I think it'd be great to hear from Joshua, too. I can appreciate where she's coming from, I know her, I don't know her, I know Craggside, which is a building she is intimately familiar with, so I understand where she's coming from, I understand her appreciation for history and her appreciation of this site, which we share, by the way. I think there were a couple of areas where we take a different position than her letter. The primary one is when she states, and I'm completely paraphrasing, but when she states the scale of this project is completely incompatible with this property, we disagree. And as I tried to explain earlier, we made great pains early on, before we started building design, we studied this property and wanted to make sure that we were coming up with a solution that was as sensitive as it could be, knowing that it was going to be a different, it's not going to be a barn with animals, it's going to be a building that serves, you know, museum functions and public accessibility. But trying to fit that, you know, reasonably sized building into a context that is sensitive, and so the fact that there was a large building on this property, and we've sort of come to the conclusion that recreating the mass of that building is appropriate, even if the building is a little bit different, it's an appropriate response, I think, to this problem, and it's far more appropriate than preserving a piece of the former barn and then building the seven or eight thousand square foot buildings in the north field, in the south field, or even in the woods. So we felt this is actually a very appropriate response in terms of the overall approach to preservation of a historic property. She closed with a line that said, "Don't big-box woodlawn." I don't think that this, again, the scale of this is inappropriate, given the history of this property, and I think her characterization of it in the context of other stalled developments in the city of which I am not aware, but I think her last paragraph dealt with projects that I think were stalled, or she talks about empty lots and slabs, and, you know, I don't think that that's a fair characterization of this project. And I think that it's a testament to woodlawn that they have invested the time and energy that they have in this project, you know, 10 years at least, and I'm just really more than that if you really think about their stewardship of this property. And we've been involved for four years and we're a design development, so we're not racing ahead, we're not irresponsibly, you know, charging ahead and coming up with something quickly and saying, "This is what we should do." We've really thought long and hard about this to try to come up with an appropriate response. That would be my take.
I mean, I'd love to hear from Mr. Horne on this.
If Mark speaks, we need to make sure to be quite close to a mic so I can make sure that I capture.
Also, let me do this. Mark is, you're speaking, Mark, excuse me, are you speaking as yourself or the?
I will be speaking as the historian for the Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission. I briefly read this letter, I've not been aware of it until now. I think as a member of the commission, we've talked about this, we are all very sensitive to the fact that we're losing something in history, we're changing something. On the one hand, woodlawn has done an excellent job in the past of preserving the structure. Things have to change with a structure such as it stands now, I don't really know what you could do with it other than just having it sit there, because it does need a lot of work, and we understand that. I think as members of the commission, what we're basically working now with woodlawn is to see what we can do to make the loss of this structure as easy as we can, as far as making sure that the materials are repurposed on the inside of the building, to make sure that the architecture fits in. It's a judgment call that we have to make, and we don't make them lightly, but we do have to look at the overall project and what is best for the facility, and on balance with some reservations and with some continued discussion, we've supported this project. But we still have a few things that we need to work out. And I guess that's why we get paid the big money to be on the commission.
Are you claiming to be paid more than we are?
If you're paid more than zero, you may be paid more than we are.
Well, I believe the city council would be happy to triple our salaries.
Yes, well, it would be nice to triple ours, too, but...
Yeah, but it's times zero.
Three times zero is times zero. So it is, it is a delicate matter as far as historic preservation is concerned, that is why we are on the commission. We do take these things seriously, and we have a lot of things that we have to consider, but ultimately, what is the best way to move forward with a project like this? If someone wants to drop in $10 million to perhaps restore that barn, I'd love to see it, but that's never going to happen. So we have to be pragmatic, sometimes we have to make decisions that we probably wouldn't like to make, but it is a balancing act, and we are working through it right now with Joshua and with the architect, and we should have a certificate of appropriateness somewhere down the road for this.
Let me just ask, would the, is there any possibility that the structure or locations may change? That is, would the, would the drawings need to be revised? And the reason I'm asking is that if we get through to approval and then you're not doing what was approved, you're right back here.
I had kind of a same line of questioning, too, about the timing.
I just caution you, I just caution you on that, so that you're not caught not being able to do without coming back.
And I think that with the certificate of appropriateness is that when we do get that finished and our discussions with woodlawn have been completed, we will have our recommendations down in print and clear, everyone will agree to it and it will be submitted, and that should be the end of our rule of this affair. So everything will be quite clear when that certificate is brought in.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is that you should probably wrap up that certificate before you come back here in case there is some change. If there's to be no change, then it wouldn't matter, but if there were...
For a final plan, you mean, right?
Yeah, for a final plan.
Yeah, that was kind of my thinking as well, that the final plan approval, instead of somehow trying to make it conditional on your acceptance and your certificate, we kind of should be really working with them to have that in place, even though the permit, I mean, you're in control of the permit anyway, but a final plan approval from us without their input first.
No, no, I agree with what the board is saying, because it may be determined that the building needs to be offset another 40 feet somewhere, you never know what's going to happen.
Some material change.
I don't know how long the commission has had a chance to review the plans and things, I don't know.
But this is all up to the applicant, but I just caution that. Unless you like us so much you want to come back again and again.
Josh, do you have any idea how long this process would take with the historic commission?
Probably a couple of months, we could probably get it done by Christmas.
Yeah, I mean...
Because you mentioned that you still had a lot of money to raise, and you really weren't going to do much until spring, anyway.
Right, I think, you know, we're ready to submit an application to the commission tomorrow if need be, but I think we want to be sensitive to get their feedback and input, and, you know, that may mean that we come back to, we have wrapped up in November, if we come back to in November, it may mean we come back to in December. I don't think it's in anyone's interest to let it linger into the new year.
No, no.
You know, frankly, getting their buy-in, getting your approval helps us finish the capital campaign. It shows progress.
If I could also just maybe give you a quick glimpse of our schedule, so you understand what we are shooting for, whether we get this or not. We've, at this point, we're at the end of the design development phase, we're about halfway through the design and production of the project. We have a six-month construction document phase where we're developing the drawings for pricing, we're working with the construction manager, ELSHA. We hope to get a GMP at the end of that six month, towards the end of that six-month period, so that was putting the GMP spring of 2018, which is a good time to price things, lining it up for that winter. So, you know, I guess the hope would be that we can try to keep to that schedule so that the end date isn't slipping out and we're seeing escalation and we're seeing, we're getting into timing issues with subs availability, so that, from the scheduling side, that's our preference. Obviously, we need to do what we need to do to work out the details with the preservation commission, but our hope would be that we can do that as quickly as possible, come back to you as quickly as possible, so that we're not, you know, basically putting the project on hold for two months to sort of work this out.
But sort of all, it's all in your hands.
Yeah, right, so we, and we've had, as I said, we've had preliminary conversations, we are willing to start, to continue that as soon as possible and work through that as quickly as is feasible with this group. But as Joshua said, we're ready to submit an application as soon as they're ready to receive it.
Yeah, I just feel like the board and its approval, I mean, we can go through all of our processes, but one of the things we have to do is make sure that, you know, preservation is taking place on the historic level. We have no qualifications to do that, so we rely on their, you know, recommendation. Anything that we say approve on before they've stipulated what the conditions of that preservation are going to be, it's, you know, it's at a kilter, it just, it doesn't flow well, I think, from our standpoint. So we're going to defer to them, you know, for what's a pretty big piece, but we can review the rest of what you get. You know, I think that's really what we want to do.
Just to be on record, just for the record, we had submitted a copy of that letter to the commission, you sent it to Cal, and I just want to make sure you knew that, we did our, it's easy to alpha from my view of the issue.
And I don't know with that letter, you know, how we addressed it.
Before, you, that's your, you've concluded your presentation?
Yes, I'm...
Is there any other presentation from the applicant?
I had two quick questions.
Okay, sure.
The first one about the barn size, the scale of the original barn, how many square feet would you say that that was?
We don't know because there aren't existing drawings of the barn, so it's, we're interpreting. But what we have tried to do, as I said, is use the, what remains of the barn as the sort of guideline for what we're doing, and, you know, whether we're 10 feet shorter or 10 feet longer, we don't know, but we know that because it exists today, we're base spacing the face of, you know, the south face of the building to the north face of the building, those dimensions we have, and we're replicating.
And you have that old photograph.
And we have the old photograph, so we have a general sense of the scale, but in terms of square footage, we don't know.
The current barn is how many square feet?
As proposed?
Yes.
We are...
As proposed, or?
Existing barn or the current, or the new project?
The proposal.
The proposal, the existing barn is 8,200 square feet.
Okay, 8,200 square feet, and that's the...
That's not footprint, that's total square footage, so that includes basement and mezzanine. So the footprint, the footprint is probably, I think that mezzanine is about 1,500 square feet, so it's probably about a 5,000 square foot roughly footprint, and we could calculate the footprint.
Okay, and I get, that's my question, is how does that compare against the photograph? Okay, and I get, that's my question, is how does that compare against the photograph with the woman from the forties?
Right, and that, we don't...
Spot on.
So we don't know for sure.
Can I just make a comment? Um, so I'm, I'm a member of the board.
You need to come to...
Okay, can I, can I just speak, this, this, this might be helpful in terms of this conversation.
Sure.
So...
Could you just, for the record, could you identify yourself?
My name's Todd Little Sebold, I'm a historian, I teach at the College of Atlantic, and I'm a member of the board. This was the largest barn in Hancock County, perhaps the largest barn in Maine, when it was built by John Black around eighteen thirty. And I think the scale, one of the things that's really important, and I, I mean, Mark knows this. What's really important about it is Mark, uh, John Black never did things in half measure, he built a big ass barn. So when we look at the, at the historical agricultural records from that barn, it was nine times larger than any other barn that we know of in, in the surrounding area. He stored ninety tons of hay in there. So this was, in terms of scale, I was insistent when we were doing this, this, to say, you know, John Black, he wanted a big barn for his big operation. And one of the things this, this project is meant to do is evoke the sort of ambition of John Black when he built that. So it is, from what I can tell, and you should, you, uh, when we were looking at the original pictures, you know, I work on history of apples, and you could see these two apple trees, the way they set it out. And I think the idea is to evoke that landscape again in exactly the way it was, so that people can see what this place looked like, you know, when the, when it was in its, its, all of its sort of maiden glory. There were fourteen people, four members of the family and ten servants that lived at this house, this was a huge... So what we've, what I've known for twenty years and others have known for their whole lifetime, is a shadow of what that, that farm scape used to look like. And so bringing that back and communicating that, having the, the opportunity in a space like that to teach people about the history, that whole back property was huge, huge fields, meadows and, and pastures that they used for their, for their animals. That was really, you know, one of the largest commercial agricultural enterprises in down East Maine. So the idea of sort of evoking that and bringing that back, and then if we can, eventually we'll replant his orchard, and we'll have more interpretation about agriculture and the history of agriculture in that area. And I'm pretty excited about this because I was just talking to a hundred and thirty kids today about the history of agriculture in, in Hancock County, and to have that to show off is gonna be spectacular.
Great, thanks for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. If, if I may make a comment on that, I estimate that barn was probably forty feet by a hundred and twenty feet. A proportion of, what, three to one, I think. And there is one barn in Hancock County still standing, which would give an indication of the mass of this structure, and that's the Sillsby Barn up in Aurora, which is just a little bit bigger, I believe, than this one. But that would give you some understanding of the proportion of the structure.
Okay.
That Sillsby Barn may be a hundred and sixty feet, I'm not sure.
I stand corrected.
Question regarding the application, there was a comment made about the waiver for the overflow parking. The plan for that space, it was the reenfirst, reinforce, first turf term was used. My question is, is the plan to do snow removal on that site? Or was that just a, like a three-season area for parking in summertime, or?
I, I mean, Josh, you can probably...
I think we would do what we do when we work with the city on the, on the, uh, winter carnival. You know, at, in February, the city comes up and they plow the field for overflow parking during the winter carnival. We, we wouldn't ask them to do it in this new facility, right? But, you know, we would be able to plow that spot if we needed to, if we had an event in the wintertime that big that we needed those twenty-one extra feet. But would we plow it every single time? Probably not.
I, I was thinking that in light of snow removal, continue plowing, I don't know if it would withstand.
No.
I think on one of the big maps in the application, it, it indicated that area was gonna be used for snow storage.
Uh, there's a different area for snow storage, I think that's identified in the city plans, that's further to the west of that, of that area.
Curiosity, in fact, it's on the slide you have on the screen, by the, in the south field, the darker green box there.
This one here?
Uh, yeah, I was just curious what that represented.
Uh, that is a croquet lawn.
Ah.
So it's a, it's a, it's grass, but it's, it's...
It's the largest croquet lawn in the room.
Why, thank you.
We invite you to come up and play croquet with us. Maybe the next planning board could be a game of croquet.
I don't have a pair of white shorts. Is there a dress code?
Well, we can ask for a waiver.
We would give you a waiver.
We'll give you a waiver.
Careful, careful. Tit for tat.
Careful. I have a question for Mike Angi.
Yes, sir.
On your letter, number five, you talk about when the buses are parked in the designated bus parking area. Looking at some of the diagrams, I didn't see anything on any of the maps that said where that was. It might have been on there, but...
It's, it's in the landscape plan.
It's in the landscape plan, as far as we're...
Oh, that's a good place to put it.
I, I, I tried to find, I didn't see it at first either, but they do have a designated spot, and they have actually identified...
Hidden amongst the trees.
That it was signage, um, and stuff that you requested, so.
And look at the landscape.
We also, like, when bus tours come, we'll have a, part of that bus tour agreement will be no unoccupied buses.
Right.
When school visits come, you know, the requirement will be, they have to stay with their bus.
I was curious about that, what, what's the reason behind that?
The, the reason that we discussed with them is the fact that if we end up having to get in there for any particular reason with fire trucks, the idea of having buses parked in any other location could actually cause us not to be able to access the building, or if they parked in the, the turnaround area at the end of that parking area, we may not be able to get around and things like that. So it's very, it can be a situation where, you know, we're trying to keep them out of the way as much as possible, depending, and there may only be one bus or two buses, but we want to keep them as much out of the way for fire department access to the building or buildings as possible.
I would just say at the same time, I think it, it highlights, you know, what a great process this is because, you know, we, we were planning bus parking, but Mike really made a great point about what happens if someone uses the bus. And, you know, it came up to a good solution because it's not really just for fire, it, it, you know, there was a accident up there. I mean, just maintaining good flow, a good access in any situation is appropriate. So I think it was a, a case of a win-win for everyone.
John, we're going down, we're going from a twenty-foot access to a fourteen, is that correct? So that was part, some of the negotiation is we need to maintain that fourteen. Well, it's gonna be variable, but we need to maintain what we have as, you know, free of obstacles as possible, you know, fixed objects, like a bus without a driver.
One other comment, on the application itself, whatever the idea was to include Mr. Black's will, I give you kudos because that was the most interesting part.
I read it too.
It was unbelievable.
There's no deed, so that's what's on the Hancock County registry of deeds.
It's absolutely amazing.
Did you add all the money I started? I was...
Well, I started to...
Like that is a lot of money.
And I actually figured out what a dollar was worth in nineteen twenty-nine for today.
You know, if we could only go back in time and ask him to add a couple zeros, we might not be in this situation right now.
And I thought it was amazing too, was that originally the property was given to the city of Ellsworth.
Mm-hmm, and then taken away?
That was probably a wise choice.
You know, so the, the two, two buildings that are the signature buildings in Ellsworth, right behind you, the library and Woodlawn, were given by Nixon Black.
Yep.
It's funny because I told Josh I was fascinated, I read the entire thing.
And you, you talk about, I mean, how many servants he had, and he took well care of the servants in his will.
Mm-hmm. It's required.
Very generous.
He took care of them, that Life magazine, when he gave the twenty-five thousand dollars to Francisco Gumby, his manservant, Life magazine wrote about that in nineteen thirty, or nineteen twenty-nine, it, it caused a sensation.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yep.
His nephew came to visit us this summer, not Nixon's nephew, but Francisco Gumby's nephew.
Oh, wow.
For the city, there were some items on the TRT, have those been addressed adequately to your...
Yeah, so the two items for completeness are number two and three, the letters from the water department and the wastewater department that have not been issued yet. They, the developer has asked for letters, but for some reason they were not issued yet, so that's really us. But, and the item about the minimum flows, that's something for the final plan that we're looking for.
Okay.
Did you see the revised, revised, the pink copy?
I wasn't aware that there was a redacted revised.
There's a lot of people bringing stuff and try to accommodate people.
Oh, right, got it.
Okay, so it's really just the wastewater, the two letters from the city are missing. But they have requested the letters with the flows, so.
So just to be clear, there's two lighting waivers, there's one for the, to drop it to an urban classification?
Uh, rural classification.
I'm sorry, to rural classification, and then there's a, a waiver for a specific area of parking.
Which is, which is this area of reinforced earth parking.
Okay.
May, may I add something regarding the lighting? So it's funny, if you look at the property, I was, I thought it was too large because the urban and rural, urban cornfield areas bisect Woodlawn in two, so the field in the back were, was, is in the rural, but the front portion is not. So I think that their waiver actually is completely in character with what they're trying to do.
Okay.
Oh. A zone change.
That's not a zone change, those are more areas that have been recognized by the council, but...
I know, but, but... But what I'm saying is it could actually be forced into compliance with a small zone change.
Yeah, well, yeah, something.
There's no zone, yeah.
Hmm? Well, I just tried to draw a lot more business.
Okay, good, yeah, we need more details. And, uh, Mr. Angi, you're, you're satisfied with their efforts to keep the fireways clear, and the fourteen-foot waiver is acceptable to you? Or is that, is that something that, do we waive that, or do you waive, do you waive that?
Well, it's kind of in both ordinances actually, as far as the width of the road.
Okay.
And my fire prevention ordinance under NFPA one requires a twenty-foot minimum travel way for all, for all fire department access roads, of which this would be an access road.
Under your, under your ordinance, it could be a site road.
It could be a site road. But with the given requirements of the sprinkling of the building, and if they meet the minimum fire required, the fire flows for firefighting, we're pretty much in tune with the fourteen-foot.
Okay.
So, so there, there's some gives and takes, we'll, we'll see what they come back with as far as the minimum fire flows and sprinkler flow allowances, and then we'll have to go from there, so.
Okay, so it is possible then that they will need to revise the plans to show possibly a twenty-foot width?
Depends on what they come back with, yes.
But I'm ju, again, just a caution for the applicant that...
Yep.
And, and then...
If, if the final plan show fourteen, and then you actually have to make it twenty, you'll be back.
Thank you.
That, that's why we're allowing them, we're gonna give them the si, leeway to get into the final plan rather than now, so give them the chance to get all this stuff together.
The, the other question I had, which relates to the lighting for the visitors, what are the hours of operation? Those twenty parking spaces, for example, when would visitors be likely to use them? What do you see?
Those spots, the overflow would probably be, would be during daylight operations. The main parking lot would be for evening, evening events, lectures, music performances. On a day-to-day basis, the regular operating hours are nine to five, you know, business hours. The, the house and the tour function will be, you know, ten to five as we are now. The public park, because we're also a public park, Ellsworth is the largest public park I may add, is open dawn to dusk. We have a sign on the property, and we, we ask people to not trespass after dark, but you can trespass any other time as you want.
I see, okay.
Does that answer that?
Yeah, I just tried to get a character of the use, so are, are there, would, would there be after-hours evening events than you would think in this new and improved venue?
There will be, yes.
Okay.
Whether those events require the twenty-one overflow spots, I, I can't say for sure.
Yeah, that's, that's hard to say, I, I was just trying to get a character of... Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is a public hearing, anyone may comment on this matter, does anyone wish to speak? Hearing none, I shall close the public hearing. Okay. So, board...
Uh, so is this an allowed use in the zone?
Yeah.
Neighborhood zone, okay.
Let, let the tension grow.
What am I missing here? So I have three waivers, one allowed use, completion, oh, the letters, the wastewater and water.
Right.
So what do we do with completeness, that we don't have those letters? Departments have been notified, and they're dropping their...
I would just...
How do we deal with that, if we don't have those two letters? What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is that we still find it complete, the letters will, will be coming.
Okay.
I don't have doubt of that, if everyone is happy with that interpretation, that's all I have to do.
I have a question about whether we can, could consider it complete, considering they've opened up the possibility that these plans may change.
But we have plans.
So that, yeah, see, that's how we separate preliminary versus final.
There are no value judgments made, we're not saying the plans are any good, or anything like that, that's for the next go.
For a complete application.
But right now, we're looking at the required submissions made, not whether, not their merits.
Were you talking about the sort of kind of, I mean, the sort of...
No, I'm talking about, you know, whether the storm, whether anything is good.
I, I don't think that we consider that, that's Dwight's gating item. But as far as final plan is concerned, we're, our advisory is gonna be to the applicant that that sort of thing is well put in place, because that's the kind of thing, I think, that can radically change the details of the plan
Yeah.
later, but I don't think we actually need that right now.
But what we have now is what the ordinance says we should have.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna make a motion about, Mr. Chairman. So with, with, with regard to the preliminary plan for major site use development titled Woodlawn Museum Visitor Center for Hancock County Trustees of Public Reservations, the Black House, Woodlawn. The proposal is to remove the carriage barn and caretaker's house, thirty-eight twenty-five square feet, and construct a visitor center and expand the workshop. Eighty-seven hundred square feet off Route one seventy-two, Surry Road, Tax Map Lot twenty-six fifty-seven, in the neighborhood zone. The board grants the requested waiver for the fourteen-foot right-of-way for the fire equipment. The fire department seems to be on board with that, pending some flows that will be provided later. The, grant a waiver for the lighting classification to rural, to allow the levels that they've proposed, and that we also grant the waiver to the minimum lighting requirement in the parking section of the twenty additional parking spaces.
None of these waivers affect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Ellsworth?
Yes, I would amend the motion to include that these do not create health or safety, welfare issues. Yes, I would amend the motion to include that these do not create health or safety, welfare issues. That the letters to the, from the...
Wastewater and water.
Wastewater and Water Department are forthcoming. And, I had... Oh, and this isn't allowed use in the zone. And so we find the application complete with those details.
Is there a second?
Hold a second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we will send you back eventual.
Yes.
It was a pleasure, Daleman.
Thank you.
Would that interfere with your presentation today?
I'm sorry?
Would that interfere with your presentation?
Not at all.
Might help.
Tie right in.
In that case, no problem.
Is this a playoff?
Yeah, it's the National League Wild Card game.
Oh, my.
Well, then it behooves you to be fast. Yes. The next item of business is final plan for modification of approved subdivision and the creation of a minor subdivision and of a major use site development entitled Our Way Development-Holt Industrial Park Amendment for Danny J. and Teresa M. Quinlan. Proposal is to split a two-point-six-five acre parcel off the Bucksport Road, tax map twenty-six, lot two, into two lots, both including one residential structure, and add two apartments to the existing duplex. And to split a three-point-seven-two acre parcel accessed off Our Way, tax map twenty-six, lot two-dash-four, into two lots, both including a residential structure in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury.
Can I ask Steve a question?
Sure.
This may be real minor and nitpicky, but it's been bugging me. It, it says it's to split a two-point-six-five acre parcel. Now, is that, would that entail lot one-one and one-two?
Two-point-six-five acres. Maybe a bunch of lots. It is.
Okay, but...
Because this originally was, on the tax map, so a front lot and a back lot.
Okay, but if the two-point-six-five acre parcel refers to lot one-one and one-two,
Yeah.
that adds up to two-point-five-six acre. And same thing for the three-point-seven-two. I mean, I don't know if the...
Where are you reading this?
Well, I mean, it says, the proposal's split a two-point-six-five acre parcel
Is this on the agenda?
into two lots. What's that?
Is this on the agenda?
Yes.
Were you reading this? Okay.
Oh, yes. I was just wondering, I mean, does it make a, we've always referred to, in all the minutes and stuff, that it's a, to split a two-point-six-five acre lot, but it appears to be a two-point-five-six acre lot. I don't know if that makes a...
I would say we're splitting a six-point-five-four acre lots, because that's the sum of the entirety, and we're dividing that into four lots.
So the, some of the problem is that it goes with, um, this agenda item was a bit complicated to write, I'm not sure if you remember, Steve. The way we track it at the city, from the assessor, it's in two lots. So for me, I need to refer to it as two lots with map and lot numbers, and that's why it's listed like this. Two-point-six-five, two-point-five, two-point-fifty-four. I think it's not
Okay.
really in this case, but we should make a note in the minutes that it was listed at two-point-six-five, but it was listed in the application as two-point-something else. I mean, that does not hurt to kind of clarify that.
But then also would create a problem like it did for town lot oh.
Well, that's another type of problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay.
I hope not.
I mean, may I just say that the Woodlawn has claims more acres that they own than actually the tax map.
This is not unusual.
It's not a perfect science. It's not a science.
Meeks, has the right-of-way been...
No, it's still sitting in the attorney's office. Last night I checked.
And so the mapped right-of-way may not be exactly as portrayed?
It will be. That's the language you're using is exactly shown on this plan.
And I know there's a fence, that, a fence that goes into the right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
Will that right-of-way language preserve the fence, or...
Yes. Yep, yes, for the use of the entire area, including the fence. So that, that will be subordinate to lot one-dash-four.
We have asked to see, there's some confusion. There is city water and there's a box at the entrance. In that box, there are currently three connections, from what I remember. One goes to the campground, both goes one direction, one goes the other. So there seems to be a mix of city water and well water in, in what is fed by what, where. The, the ordinance does ask for existing utilities and for most utilities. We would like that, we're trying to, to clean things up. It would be helpful to have maybe a diagram of what is what exactly. That's still not clear. And it's not clear in the plan, it's, what is, where is city water, what is city water, and what is...
Is there any chance those two supplies are mixing?
No, we just not, it's not clear. And where that also has a, an impact is the property, the house that is the furthest north on the Bucksport Road shows a, if I remember correctly, um, can you show me the plan? So that, the two-ten Bucksport Road house, this is the, do you have another plan for me?
No, that's, that's the most current, September.
Okay. Reggie Winslow has said that, um, you are planning to bring water from, let me get my bearings here. So how is proposed right now is there would be a proposed new water line, as you see, that would come along US Route one and would go to that house. So you see there's an, well, the thing is, and that would be a public water line, if I remember correctly. Reggie Winslow did mention that you can't cross property lines, because now this is going to be two lots. You'd have to bring the water from, straight from US Route one. So I think the, the existing and the proposed water situation has not been clarified.
You're looking at a final subdivision plan five-five-five-zero-B?
E.C. September fourteen.
That's the existing conditions?
Yeah.
And the proposed conditions are?
I don't know. That's where I said, I'm a bit confused, but...
See, it looks like here on, on this proposed plan that water connects here and water connects here. Nothing travels along Route one or crosses the two lots.
That's not the right... You're looking at a plan that I'm looking at, which was provided, which is called existing condition.
Yeah.
It has proposed new water line. It has approximately, and that's why it's, it's, I think that there's a, we've asked for more clear information, because what is shown right now under the E.C. condition. So, it could be a condition of approval that was something that's acceptable, but right now the existing water and the proposed water is not clear, both in the sense of is it, because it says the, the proposed new water line, it doesn't tell you it would be public. So it needs to really specify the existing water, what it is, where it's coming from, and the proposed water, where it is, where it's coming from. And really, what we're trying to do is protect the developer. At the last minute, nobody says, hey, by the way, no, you've got to bring it, because I think it's going to be more expensive to bring it from the street, and that's, so, this is not, this, this is not clear.
All right, I understand what you're saying. My mistake, sorry.
That's not, that's not... It's, it's not until one, yeah. I think you were looking at the utility line.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Got my symbols mixed up.
It's, it's conf, it's confusing. We're trying to, I think the applicant's trying to clean up something.
Should we ask them that question? What they intend to do about?
Well, it might be appropriate.
Uh, Mr.?
We intend to clear it up with the city staff and...
Okay.
But you're going for final approval now.
Yep.
And the plans don't reflect this. In other words, if we approve these plans, it's likely that there will be changes in the utility lines.
Yeah, which I don't even propose to show on the final plan.
Why not?
Because that, you know, that's mostly just showing where the lot lines are going to be.
But a utility plan is appropriate where there are utilities.
On the interior of each lot.
Part of the subdivision. If we're taking it from city, for city water.
Okay.
Well, the action of creating, of separating those lots, when you have water line that travels from one house to the other, but now you're separating the lots.
Yeah.
That doesn't work anymore. So if he had not been separating the lots, that would have been maybe one thing, but the fact that the idea is to create separate lot, and there's, there's issues that, that comes up and starts coming up. And we've been kind of trying to, to be lenient with this plan. Just, I mean, we're trying to touch what really needs to be touched upon, but that kind of is still a problem.
Yeah, because if there's a problem with the water feed from one lot to another, who's responsible?
Through, through a building to another building.
So, and, you know...
It's not just one lock down, no?
Yeah, but it's who has the right to go in and affect repairs, for example. So it seems, it seems, at least to me, the fact should be cleared up so that current owners and future owners would know
Mm-hmm.
what their options are.
Sure. It's no big deal, either way.
But it's not shown on the plans here now, which makes it difficult to prove it. Further questions from the board, board members?
Yeah, I guess I'm, it, it seems like the language of the right-of-way is pretty well spelled out on this final subdivision, and you're waiting for some legal approval on that? Is that the...
Yeah, deed change. Releasing the old right-of-way in favor of the new right-of-way.
Okay. And that hasn't been executed yet, or...
Not been executed, yeah. I've written the descriptions, I gave it to the attorney. Waiting for legal documents to come out of the, the attorney's office.
And, and that's something that gets sent to the registry of deeds?
Yes.
Do, do the plans also go to the registry of deeds, or is it just the written description?
The plans get recorded.
That we signed.
But in this case, the, 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 the change in the deed cannot move forward unless Mrs. Meeks approves.
And that approval has not taken place yet?
Um, I, Mrs. Meeks is in the room, and you can answer that question.
Could you come up to the podium? The question is, is, as the information you have on the, on the new deed right-of-way, has that met your satisfaction?
I have not seen that. I mean, I expected to come here today and find that this was a final plan, and I know the surveyor was at the property recently. I don't know where the lines are, uh, you know. I mean, I really want, don't want to hole this up, I think, you know, but it's, this is, should be the final one, and, and I, it doesn't seem from the, the water has nothing to do with me, I have my own well, but the right-of-way does have to do with me, and an easement to allow for the fence, which is slightly on his property, does have to do with me. The original right-of-way was not delineated. It went right in front of this house, the main house, to my garage. It is now cut off, and it is to be, um, I forget the word, was it expunged, deleted, whatever, at the time that this new plan is adopted. So I am hesitant to, what would I do, you know, if you approve this plan and we don't have these, this dimensions of this right-of-way or where it's supposed to be? I don't have anybody representing me except myself, so I don't even know, you know, whether this is appropriate to state or whatever. I don't want any trouble with my neighbor.
Thank you. I would suggest, can I say something to you about this? Is it, is it appropriate? The, the final plan, this, this plan that I see in front of me? Oh, never mind. Yeah, the, the language was, the language about the easement, I mean, there's a, there's a drawing here that shows the right-of-way with boundaries on it. But you're right, the, it says existing right-of-way will be extinguished.
Extinguish is the word.
Yeah, see, I'm not comfortable with that being on the plan without something in its place.
I expected that would all be taken care of by today. It's a... It's a sit.
Okay.
Doesn't seem that difficult, is it? I mean, I don't know. Is it?
I, I think it's, it appears to be sort of mid-process and I'm uncomfortable with that as well. So thank you.
This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Anyone else? I shall close the public hearing. What would the board like to do?
I'm not comfortable with, with the language that would be, what, this? So what's going to get delivered to the registry of deeds is the, the plat that says final subdivision plan five, 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 zero B? Is that what we would sign? What, what is the existing condition planned? Does this get signed and given to the registry or no?
I hadn't planned on recording that, no.
All right, so the, this is, this is just my, my feeling about this. The part where the signatures are has, um.
You can't, you could approve a condition if that's what you want, but you can't approve a plan with an easement, a change to a deed to which an owner, from my point of view, has not agreed to.
Yeah, because we can't extinguish that right of way.
And so therefore, there's no, there's no plan that will be recorded until that has taken place.
And, yeah, see, the, the language on the plan itself says that the existing right of way will be extinguished in favor of a new easement. So it has this like prediction of the future written on it and.
Most likely, all this will be exactly how it is, except that has, has not taken place in stamp and approved by the party to which the deed, by which they have ownership of that deed. But it just has not been to the lawyers, so.
Let me, let me ask you, is it appropriate, the table is pending the resolution of the, the Mrs. Meeks issue and the issue that Michelle has brought up with the water lines?
It is. To be done.
And I'm fine with that. So moved. Seconded.
That we, that we table this until those, the water line issue and the right of way issues are resolved. And then you can approve the final result. Or not, but. So it's been moved, they seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please? Okay, so your, everything stops until these two issues, your issue and the water line issue have been resolved. That means that you have signed a new agreement. Yes. So, you know. So it, it needs your approval.
Now, now I want to say that the applicant could move, I just want to make sure that we're clear. The applicant could move ahead by not changing the language of this deed and keeping it, keeping it at an undetermined place.
See, I disagree with that characterization as well.
As long as that that language would be taken out, yeah, that's how the deed is, I mean, that could continue.
The deed does give a general description of where that right of way is.
Not right now.
No, no.
It says along a southerly boundary.
No, a vertical boundary.
Says on our way.
Says along our way, where that is.
I, I want to give credit to the applicant, the applicant, they're trying to clean up something, Steve is trying to immortalize something that's going to be more beneficial to Mrs. Meeks. The only problem, the applicant can keep going without having that sentence.
Running generally southerly along easterly line of the premises. Is that not?
No.
That, is that not the right of way we're referring to?
Well, it's not very clear description.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, like you were saying.
There's no specific location.
Together with an easement and right of way, fifty feet in width, in common with others having the same rights, over the existing roadway. So draw me a center line down the existing roadway. For ingress and egress.
I don't want to debate this any longer really, but I believe that's the easement to the back lot of the applicant's.
Okay, so I'm reading the wrong.
You're reading the wrong deed.
I think Steve's ready to move on to the second one.
I've moved on already.
He wants to go, he's kind of baseball gamey, I'm just.
He's got stuff to do.
The first pitch was twenty minutes ago, so.
He's walking with a decision.
Would you like time to check the score?
Nope, I'm good.
It was like last night, it'd go on for an hour for the first inning.
We don't play till tomorrow night anyway, so. The end result from last night was good, though.
The table, the motion passed.
But the motion was to set us aside until all this was resolved. Yes.
When your father's born in the Bronx. And you're raised in the shadow of George Washington and Bridge.
I grew up thirteen miles from right away.
So, the next item of business is the final plan. Major subdivision titled Village of Roy Lees. The proposal is to create a twelve lot cluster land subdivision of the Buckspore Road and the Atlantic Highway located on a one hundred forty acre parcel. Tax map forty-six, lot nineteen, and the drinking water zone. This is someone representing the applicant, please.
Steven Salisbury. We made a few revisions to the plan from, from the last meeting. We, we now show the test pit locations on lot one. We've got a setback table. Giving ten feet on the front and side boundary lines, thirty feet on the rear boundary lines. And I've supplied a memo, and I don't know if we got copies of it.
They're getting email and other copies.
Regarding intersections around town.
Yes, we received those.
Okay, covering the, the concern with TRT. Oh, and I guess we, we revise the covenants to further emphasize the fact that there's no development going to happen in the common area. Though that was concerned last meeting.
The, the two remaining issues we listed here is site distance. And then the, you granted waivers during the previous meetings that are listed on here, minutes. These waivers should be listed in this, in the signature law. Really, it's, what's remaining is a site distance.
So we could make the waiver inclusion a condition in the file, yeah?
No, you've granted the waivers, it's just that Steve needs to make sure that the waivers are listed below the signature law.
We're not signing anything tonight.
Okay, so that will be a condition of the.
Yeah, no, I don't have my ours ready.
Okay.
Which is good.
Didn't want to be that presumptuous.
Probably was.
It probably was.
So sight lines and, and.
Yeah.
Vehicle travel speeds. The road's rated at thirty-five, so the, by default, we would ask for three hundred and fifty feet of sight line. Is that where we stop? And then the applicant says that it's really.
You can't, you can't get three hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
You'll never get it, and I pointed out several projects around town that have been reviewed by, some of them were reviewed by this board and some by code office. Some of them designed by the city's engineer, and nobody's paying any attention to sight distance from an intersection. There's nothing specific in the ordinance that tells us we got to be ten feet per mile an hour from the intersection.
Okay. Sight distance, you mean, so the definition of sight distance being like, how far can I look before I hit a tree or something?
Well, actually, DOT has a standard where you have to go out, you have to sit at a certain height.
Yep.
You be a hundred and fifty so far from the center line, look up and down the road to get that sight distance.
Actually, we have also a standard in the ordinance stipulated that you have to measure.
How to measure sight distance, yes.
So whether there's an intersection involved or not, I mean, an intersection is like a lot of open space, right? So you can look past that.
The, the issue, I think, becomes, sight distance is typically down a, down a road.
Susan, could you just state your name?
Yeah, Chip Haskell, it's the ES.
Thank you.
Uh, the sight distance is typically defined as, as down a road. And that is simply because on that road, you're traveling that speed. Through the intersection, you're not really traveling that speed, therefore, your stopping distance is significantly less than it would otherwise be if you were traveling at thirty-five miles an hour down that road. So that's why when you're, when you're measuring that for DOT and, you know, for the city of Ellsworth, you are looking if, you know, in this case, it's, it's down a, down a road and you see a lot of these developments that are in close proximity to certain intersections. Because for all intents and purposes, you are at a virtual stop or, or much less than the posted speed limit going through that intersection.
So in section nine, ten of the ordinance, access management, they talk about safety sight distance and it explains clearly how to measure it, the sight distance, what it is to be provided. And it also includes how a waiver can be granted. That, but that waiver provision does not exclude the other waiver provision in Article six as well.
And, and one comment to make with the board here is that, looking at the configuration of Atlantic Highway, I think moving the road northerly, because of that arcing nature of that road, it's not going to improve sight distance. If you move further away from Route one, you, you're not going to improve your, your actual sight distance because the road sweeps generally away. So, you know, and the other comment I had, there was a letter referenced about being near a driveway. To move that, that, that Village Way entranceway further up towards the corner actually counteracts that person's comment of being close to their driveway. So there's, there's two, two issues at hand, you have a neighbor complaining it's so close to their road, their driveway. If we moved it closer, I, I don't see how it would improve sight distance if we moved it that sixty feet towards the corner.
All right, so, so that was the proposal, was move the road. So move the entrance.
And that was brought up to someone, yeah, yeah.
So that's kind of.
I, I don't see how that would be. Move sight distance.
There's also a fire hydrant there that would have to be moved, too.
Yeah, I saw that. So, so what is the resulting? I thought I saw a, a measurement on the, one of the plans of the distance that can be seen.
There is, two hundred feet, two, brings you to the edge of the Buckspore Road.
Okay.
Now, does that, as you turn in from the Buckspore Road, it's quite a dip.
Dip?
Yep. I mean, if, if you're sitting at Village Way.
Yes.
Looking out towards the Buckspore Road.
Yep.
Okay. Once a car comes in, as it comes in the Buckspore Road, you're probably, you're going to see the whole car.
Yes.
As it proceeds, maybe fifty feet. Again, like, you know, I, I was sitting alongside the road, I wasn't, I'm, there's, there's no driveway in place now, so I couldn't really sit where the driveway.
You couldn't sit at the driveway, no.
But half the car disappears from sight. You know, the lower part of the car. So I think at this point, I mean, it's kind of hard to, to say exactly what the conditions are because the driveway hasn't been completed. I mean, I know Chief Moser was out there and, and ran a couple of tasks, but I would caution the board that, I mean, it's just one person driving one car saying, I think in one direction he could come on twenty-five miles an hour, another. Section thirty, you might be able to do it at ten and fifteen, somebody else might be able to do it at forty and fifty.
Yeah.
You know, I, so that, you know, I'd, I'd rather see something, you know, us base something in science, you know, rather than a test like that. And I think the closest thing to science we have is, is our, our ordinance and sight distances or DOT's sight distances, which are a little less.
I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that says you've got to be X amount of feet from an intersection.
I think what we're.
No, it doesn't, but it, but on the same token, it, it does talk about sight distance and if.
Yes, but you're coming, you're starting at a zero speed, coming from that intersection, accelerating down a highway.
So what?
No different than intersection at Dunkin' Donuts or.
Right.
Or, or Global Beverage Warehouse, does people feel safe or not coming out of Global Beverage Warehouse? That intersection's very close.
Somebody's not coming into Atlantic Highway, starting at a zero speed.
What, what we're saying is, I mean, the sight distance itself is meant, it, it's technically called stopping sight distance. So what you are protecting against or, or proving in your distance is saying that the oncoming vehicle approaching your, your driveway will be able to see you, recognize you, have the, have the reaction time and be able to stop in the distance provided. And that is assuming you're going at a certain speed. That's what, that's what you're, that's what you're, that's what that sight distance is provided for in, in DOT and, and in the city. Our contention here and, and what happens at all these intersections is that you are not traveling at that posted speed limit. And that's why sight distance is not, not an accurate indicator at, at an intersection, you know.
So then it, it clearly states that it would be the burden of the applicant to demonstrate. So it says the funding board may lower the safety sight distance if an engineer can provide adequate documentation that a shorter sight distance will provide adequate safety in following recommendations by the city planner in consultation with the Ellsworth Police Chief and the Ellsworth Police Enforcement Office. The question is, um, the burden approved to demonstrate this is upon the applicant, so.
I mean, can I say something to that, to that end? I mean, I would be happy if, if that recommendation from an engineer came from somebody that, the, the city engineer, not, not to disbelieve the applicant, but I'd rather see that recommendation from a city engineer.
Have a peer review?
Well, that's not a ship as a peer review, but, so we have, so what we've done is, we have definitely, at the city level, have documentation from staff that we're not engineers, but that, um, it didn't seem to pose a problem, we're not experts. But we definitely, um, I, I do want to say before we continue that the DOT stopping sight distance, as Chip explained, is not necessarily based on a ten miles per hour. I believe it's a bit lower than that. And definitely, we can get an engineer to give us a, a decision on that front or an opinion.
I kind of want to stay in line, you know, I would like to see if we do that, you know, our engineer talk with Steve to see, you know, exactly how far you could push the road coming out of Village Way. I realize you have that hydrant right there. But, uh, I mean, to, to have that, obviously, I, I think the further towards that hydrant where you have it, I mean, mapped out now, uh, you know, would be, obviously, it, it gives more sight distance.
If you move down that two farther, though, you're going to lose sight of the intersection.
Right, no, and, yeah, I mean, I think.
If you actually want to come out as close to that intersection as you can, see it, because that's where the traffic's going slowest. And keep in mind, Atlantic Highway serves like eleven houses, I counted them.
Yeah.
And what I, I heard with the applicant in the point about, in order to maneuver that turn, if you were traveling on the Buckspore Road and to turn onto Atlantic Highway, if, if you were to take that turn at thirty-five miles an hour, you would roll. So I, I, I hear his point. And I, you have, Michelle was saying about proving that, uh, we just have to quantify how, how much you have to slow down. I agree, I think when you maneuver that turn off of Route one onto Atlantic Highway, there's no way you can go thirty-five miles an hour.
So those eleven residents down there, you sit there with a radar gun someday and watch them all come home. And when they all travel us a twenty miles an hour around the corner, you have enough sight distance, right? Because you've got two hundred feet and per the ordinance. So if they're doing twenty miles an hour and they come around that corner.
That's a study.
We don't need a waiver.
Right, that's right.
They come around the corner at twenty-five, then the board needs to consider, all right, is that safe enough? Can we deal with that? If they come around the corner at thirty-five, either they're gonna flip the car over or.
It's an awkward, it's an awkward turn.
I, I mean, I'm just trying to like characterize the, the situation, cause I, I, I appreciate your description is, it's the guy sitting at the, waiting to pull out that needs to be protected, not from him being able to get around a car that's coming around the corner, it's the car that's coming around the corner that needs to be able to stop. When he decides, I'm gonna go, I don't know where the cars are, but I'm gonna go anyway.
That's only in Massachusetts.
You're pulling some good ones tonight, John.
So it, it seems like if that guy comes around the corner at twenty miles an hour, then we have enough sight distance. But this kinda says.
John has experience with the radar gun.
See, but this says an engineer can provide adequate documentation and we're just all.
Well, I mean, you can, you can, you can use, you know, others. I, I. I don't know.
Yes, so.
So how do we resolve this?
I think the intent here with that engineer is if an engineer can stamp it with his or her seal saying that that geometry, that speed limit, blah, blah, is safe, he or she would design a road like this. In this case, I would be personally okay with that.
Does that cover it?
I mean, the, I did, um, create a memo, um, dated nine thirteen. I did not stamp it, but I certainly could, um, just kind of explain.
Page one-twenty.
Thank you, Steve.
Your last page of your application.
Oh, yeah.
If you filled your body.
Um, and that just basically explains what, what we've already talked about today. And I think if, um, we looked at the police chief's, you know, results from his study, and I understand that's just one person, but if he doesn't understand safe, safe driving, I don't know who would, right? It does, uh, pretty well confirm kind of my assumptions in this memo. Just stating, you know, what that sight distance means, what the characteristics of that intersection might be, given that they're not traveling at that full posted speed limit at that point, providing them more than enough time to stop should that, should anybody be coming out of Village Way as they're coming around the corner. So I guess that would be that in, in, in addition to Steve's later, um, submission.
Village, Village Way, the, that's the access road for the project.
Correct.
Assuming, um, there's gonna be a stop sign right there?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, you'd have to stop lot, okay, is it clear?
Yeah.
I mean, I, this, I've never heard this discussion before with the plan anymore about any of these commercial projects that have way more impact with the traffic. This rinky-dink little subdivision out of my highway.
You are just lucky.
I was.
But, but it does bring up the question on, on, on all the similar properties with, with very proximate entrances to intersections.
I understand that, but if, if, say, an error were made in allowing this, it's not really, have the, have the obligation to continue. In fact, we have an obligation not to.
Absolutely.
With that argument.
Yep, and, and I guess, um, for the reasons we've stated, sight distance, um, is not defined in the direction of an intersection, because you're not, the measure, the, the, the equations aren't the same.
Let me open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? Please come up and state your name for the record.
My name is Susan Walsh, and I'm here speaking as a property owner and I, I have the property immediately abutting this proposed subdivision, uh, Blessed Be Farm, also known as Rocky Horror Farm. Uh, and I've, I've got it all written out here, if you don't mind, I'm not gonna be able to recite this from memory, but, uh, for many years, myself, since nineteen eighty-four, I, along with my cherished neighbors, have enjoyed the peace and quiet, along with night skies brilliant with stars on our hill. We now find ourselves facing the loss of these things that have made our neighborhood something to be treasured, the threatened loss of our quality of life. There's nothing to guarantee that this little housing project won't mushroom into something larger and more odious, even kept within its current proposed guidelines, and we know changes will be made to those. We must insist on certain safeguards as to lighting, traffic, and noise, among other things. We must also have absolute assurance that there will be a wetlands study done and mitigation in place for the loss of and damage to our hilltop wetlands. The potential damages to the springs, pools, and streams, we and the wildlife so enjoy and depend on. Precisely what are the mitigations and, that would allow this project to proceed? As to lighting in this project, we must insist on full cutoff lighting, as this will prevent any light trespass. That all exterior lighting be kept to a minimum and installed with motion detectors for activation. We must also insist there be no streetlights. This will help ease the tremendous ecological and human health consequences we will otherwise be forced to face. If further information is required on the deleterious effect of light pollution, please refer to the International Dark Sky Association. Traffic, and I know we were just covering that, Atlantic Highway already sees a high amount of traffic, much of it traveling at too great a rate of speed. We have children, grandchildren, pets, and livestock we must keep safe. Now, I understand my immediate neighbor, Tammy Walker's already sent you folks on the board a letter, complete with photographs. Noise, we currently enjoy listening to the birds during the day, the crickets and frogs who rely on those wetlands previously mentioned at night, and, yes, the song of coyotes from time to time. It is with these concerns and others in mind that I ask you to tread very, very carefully in proceeding down this highly questionable path, and I welcome any questions you might have.
Um, so in your experience, as far as people that drive down that road, is it, do the residents are the ones that mostly use that, or are there other people that are going down towards Happy Town Road to?
It's mostly residents, um, some of them coming off of Clearwater Way, um, yes, uh, it's hard to tell, cause it's, it seems crazy, but I would, I would think people living on the lower half of the hill would go down to the bottom of the hill where it's a lot safer to get out onto, up, onto the highway, but we get a lot of people coming up the hill.
Or we drive down to exit there.
Yeah, I, I would think if you live on the lower half, you would go down to the bottom half, there's a lot, you have much greater line of sight for getting out safely.
Right.
Um, I know I've seen people going easily forty, forty-five miles an hour up and down that road. I think, in their defense, I think sometimes people coming off the highway are still in highway mode and they're just tooling along, they slow down to make that turn so they don't roll over, and then it's right back up because they're, they're still thinking highway.
Are there any speed limits posted on that road, do you remember?
There's no posted speed limit on that road, no. It would be nice if there were, but, uh, I, I, I mean, I personally, I think twenty, twenty-five miles an hour is plenty fast enough. It's a, it's a small road, it's residential, and we're always, you know, there's no need to be driving any faster than that, but a lot of people do. And as far as line of sight up to the intersection goes, uh, I'm the first, I'm gonna be the first, no. After the Village driveway, there's, um, it becomes my driveway, and there are many times when I have approached the end of my driveway and I look both ways, I roll forward a little further, and I look up towards the highway and it's all of a sudden, there's cars there. You know, they, they come, they come along quite quickly, and they can appear out of, almost out of nowhere.
All right, thank you for that.
You're welcome, thank you.
What are the, uh, there, there were mention of wetlands, was there some areas that were being recovered or used?
No.
Nope.
I don't know what she's talking of, had a full investigation, there's no wetlands.
Okay.
There's no wetlands in the area of the project.
Of being developed, none, zero.
I think that's the nature of the, the size of these small cluster lots, the remaining lands do include the wetlands.
Yep.
That was my understanding.
And that's the fact that it's a subdivision, there's no infrastructure being imposed for lighting or streetlights. This is all just land subdivision?
Yeah, with, uh, with a water line in the street and, uh, probably gonna be underground power too.
Okay.
You know, no spec houses being built?
Yes, there's a house on Lot, Lot Shows on the Plan Lot, full lot form.
Yep.
On a lighter note, um, we would like to have a signature block on plans C two, C seven oh one and C two oh one.
Oh, you know what, I forgot completely something from the last item in the black house, can we do a site visit?
You wanted to do a site visit, we can, we can still, I'll put it down.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I think we had talked about that, actually.
I think I have one of those, yeah, Michelle? I don't have one of seven oh one, we can add that.
Okay, seven oh one.
C seven oh one, C two oh one.
Two oh one's already got a pool of law.
Which one do you have it on?
Two oh one.
Oh one.
Okay, so this is an old one here.
Okay.
We'll add one to seven oh one.
Yeah, seven oh one would be good, yep.
Um, so the letter that, have this letter certified?
I need to go back into heavier stuff.
Yeah.
He's working.
Um, just.
Oh.
There is, I believe there's no, uh, I don't believe, I know there's no streetlight proposed on the project.
My question, isn't, isn't this in the drink, drink water zone? Is there a lighting standards for that zone?
No, that's called a rural area, which is not a zone, it's an area, but that's, yeah.
So.
It's in the rural area, and in this case, um, they're single-family homes, that's, we don't have standards. We have some general standards where you can't put a garage floodlight, you know, up like this
In your face.
to annoy you, cause, you know, they don't like you, but. In general, um, there's, there's not, there's a general standard that why do things gonna go check unless, not, not, doesn't check unless there's a complaint.
And I think a streetlight at the the intersection won't make sense, but I think that has to go to the streetlight committee.
Yeah, that's not under approval. You're welcome to make the recommendation.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to interject something, if you put a streetlight at the corner there, it's gonna shine right in my bedroom window.
I put a streetlight at the corner, sorry, John.
You brought up the streetlight.
That's out of the scope of this board, so.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not something that. Oh, she brought it up.
Okay. Twelve lot, public carrying, finding of facts and conclusion, drinking waters, uh, Bucksport Road, the road, the stamp letter, the, what, what else for final plan that we need to cover with the applicant?
Just regarding sight distance, I think staff-wise, I mean, I think that there was a, a feeling that it was adequate, so I think that for, if you wanted to waive it, the last remaining stuff is a letter from an engineer, and I think they're saying they have that.
Oh, let's be presented to the city.
All right, so we have.
We have the memo.
Planner, we have.
And you would stamp the memo.
I can certainly stamp that, yes.
Okay, so we virtually have that.
And everybody else in that waiver section is covered.
And the only issue I, I have with that, no offense, Chip, but are you being paid by Steve?
No, not yet. Don't be hasty with my money.
Depends on whether you get the waiver.
That's right.
Cause could that be a condition, if we do receive an independent letter from an engineer?
Yes.
Okay, so that could be a condition of approval.
That would make me happy.
You're, you're looking for a peer review of his stamp letter.
Well, I think, I don't wanna call it a peer review, cause I'm thinking about, just an independent letter from an engineer.
Independent verif, okay, so we're gonna ask him to stamp this and give it to us, but then we're also gonna get an independent review of this same thing.
Yeah, we, we're going to either do a peer review or do something, then we will get an independent engineer to stand.
All right, so we're.
To review, well, we'll probably do a peer review, but I don't wanna call this, cause I just wanna think a bit, get a chance to think about what we're gonna call. But it will be an independent.
Review of.
The letter that Chip has provided.
Now, suppose that independent review turns out to be negative.
It's always the last line of defense.
Oh, no, 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 well, no.
He's not gonna get his Mylar signed, he doesn't have his Mylar, we're not gonna present the Mylars to you. When you do conditions, we don't present them, I don't present the Mylars to you unless a condition like that.
Oh, so in this case, Michelle's our last.
I go through the minutes, I go back.
I have one other comment, or just, uh, reviewing the TRT report, you know, this language in there about uh, reducing the speed limit on that road, I, obviously, that can't be a condition for this application, but
Yeah, we're gonna restand with.
I made a request to Bruce, it's in the, in the Hopper, I guess?
Yes.
So he has to do a study?
I think it, the gist of it is, uh, these things take time.
So it's been submitted, right? There's some record of that?
I have submitted the, he came back to me, I wrote an email to him, and he came back to me, he said, that, I said, regarding the speed limit, he, I said, uh, how do we, you know, um, look at all this, and he said, just get it through the process, and I did, I said, well, go for it.
So at some point, they could presume we go post that road then with actual signs?
Well, the city would have to, I suppose.
What?
The city would have to put the speed limit signs up.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant, we were kinda outside your peer review already by talking about DOT.
DOT's gonna do a study.
Okay.
Just let some progress, that was my question.
It's been requested.
So are we good here? Uh, we'll, I guess we'll find out when we vote now, won't we?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to this final plan for the major subdivision titled Village Roy Lee's, the proposal is to create twelve lot cluster land subdivision of the Bucksport Road and the Atlantic Highway located on a hundred and forty acre parcel, tax map lot forty-six nineteen in the drinking water zone. The board, uh, approves this application with the following, um, items needing to be addressed. The first one being approval blocks added to the appropriate drawings. C seven oh one and C two oh one were referenced, I believe only one of those needs it. Um, we are looking for a stamp letter from CES on the Village Road subdivision road sight distance, and we would like to initiate an independent review of said contents of that memo.
And did you say the waivers will be listed in the signature block? The waivers will be listed in the signature.
And that the waivers will be listed in the signature block of the drawings.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, please? I am going to abstain because, um, the prob, the neighboring property owner is a, is a longstanding friend, so.
So did this motion pass? Yes?
Three, three and one abstention.
Okay. Okay. Do you wanna talk about this, uh, before you adjur, uh, you do go to the Mylars and adjourn, do you wanna talk about the site?
Visit.
Site visit, yeah, I think it would be a. The site, does it, yeah, I think it would be appropriate to maybe go out there and get a sense of the scale and the relationship of what they're proposing? If they're amenable to that, it sounds, oh, and the other thing I wanted to do was invite anybody from their store commission to that meeting. Because I, I mean, we talked with them tonight, but I feel like we want to dialogue with them a little bit and get a feel for what they're thinking about this whole thing. So by the time we get to final plan, we're both on the same page. So you could extend that to some way to them or offer that to them.
Yes. So we will, I will call you for a date. Because the applicant's gone, so obviously we can't coordinate that, and so we advertise and, yeah, okay.
Cool, thank you so much. Motion to adjourn after the milars are signed.
Second that.
All in favor of adjournment after the milars are signed?